Next on is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Ready to vote. All right, we're now ready to for school highlights.
This is our favorite time of the board meeting. The very beginning when we get a chance to celebrate students and acknowledge families. And so as we have, this evening, we have several families with us and several students with us. And so we may go a little bit out of order in terms of our school highlights. We'll first start off with our Senior of the Month. The Senior of the Month, for those that don't know, is the time in which we, about three years ago almost, we started selecting a senior every month to highlight, to acknowledge because of their accomplishments. It's most important, I think, at the very beginning because when we say, who's the Senior of the Month, for the principal to say, oh, here's the person that comes to mind out of almost a thousand students. So with that, let me call up our amazing principal, Mrs. Dr. Perry, to come up and tell us a little bit about our senior and bring our senior on up. Good evening, Dr. Perry.
Good evening. I'm so glad to be back in school. Love to see you all here tonight. Yes, I am, I have the privilege of being asked that question now at least once a year. And now that I kind of got the swing of things, it was really pretty simple. Perla Soto jumped right into my mind in thinking about the Senior of the Month this month. And it just so happens to be a month that we also are celebrating Hispanic students. And that is so important to me, especially as the Hispanic population is my majority minority at the school. And so Perla is one of those students that really is a quiet leader, except she has a great sense of humor. She, she's, she's a leader among leaders. People really are following what she's doing. She has this great sassiness, like she showed up in this hat where like, I'm like, okay, girl, go ahead. You know, and, and so like she just has this way about her that emerges and she just lets her light shine wherever she goes. It was easy also for me to reach out to teachers and ask and have to have so many choices of who I could pick to actually do the interview for the video for her as well. I take a lot of pictures at school. If you look at our Facebook pages and things like that, I take a lot of pictures. But she's also one that I've taken several pictures of her holding the camera because she's also behind the camera, often taking pictures of others doing different types of events. Also, I am extremely proud of her because she is bold and she's loud and proud when it comes to her culture. And so it is easy for me to say that about her. Lastly, before the teacher, you see the video when we introduce Perla and her, and her peeps that she's got with her tonight. When I sent to one of her teachers that he was going to be the one selected to do the video, he said, she's one of the best I've ever had. She's going to be on my yearbook staff next semester, other than her schedule, of course. He said, thanks for this opportunity to talk about a great kid. So congratulations to Miss Perry.
We also have a video, so we'll play the video, turn it over to Perla and give her her gift. The video is a new edition last year that we started.
Describe Perla as an excellent student, not just because of her intelligence, but also because of her attitude. I had her in my video production class last year. She always comes to class ready to work and it really rubs off on her peers. Other kids usually don't pair her for leadership.
Academically, I would say that I try very hard. I'm a perfectionist. I like being that example for my younger brothers since I'm the oldest that needs someone to look up to and I'm proud that I can be that for them, that it is possible to achieve a 4.0 and straight A's.
Perla deserves to be Senior of the Month because of all the work she's put in the last few years and because of her positive outlook on life. She's always optimistic. She's always got a smile on her face. I just think she's a great kid who works hard and deserves to be Senior of the Month.
When I graduate, I want to have enough money to go to college. That's the main thing. But I really want to go into forensic science. I want to do a lot of stuff besides forensic science. I really want to go into filming because I really love movies and I really like graphic design. So there are three main things to choose from.
The advice that I want to give her is just keep being herself, keep working hard, keep being positive and optimistic, keep that smile on your face because people are going to look to her for the rest of her life and leadership.
All right, any comments that you would like to say and then we'll turn it over to the board for questions.
I'm not that optimistic. And I didn't know they were going to take films of my little short films in the video, so now you saw me dancing, so.
Can you share where you'd like to go to college and you pretty much mentioned what you hope to do in the future, but in your most memorable event at high school?
Well, first I want to thank my parents for being here. My dad, Juan, he really, he's a shy person and that's where I got it from. And he's really always there for me, even though he doesn't seem like it. And my mom, Maria, she's a big sweetheart. She's like a big mama bear. And my two brothers, Pablo and Juan. Even though they annoy me to a point of me just wanting to strangle them both, I really love them and I'm glad that they're here supporting me. And about the question of where I want to go to school, I don't really have anywhere I want to go. I just want to study, although it's a lot of money, I'll get there somehow. I really want to go to Washburn. It has, they have a really good science program. But then at the same time, I really want to do film, so I'm still looking at which schools I want to go to and.
Well, you want to open it up to questions from the board?
Yeah.
Any questions?
We always like hearing about what your experience has been like throughout your years in school, so it doesn't just have to be high school, but any teachers or experiences in Tepica Public Schools that really made a difference for you.
Well, I always remember having teachers that would come to me and ask me if I was okay. I'm, I've always struggled, you know, with anxiety and depression. So it was very nice to have teachers come up to me and say that they're there for me. And I also had friends too at school that would go and tell counselors that like Perla needs help, like she... Because I don't really like to reach out to people. I'm more of a like stay here and help others and that's how I deal with my problems. So having someone, a teacher, be there and listening from, to me, besides, you know, lecturing me and teaching me about math and functions is a, it's, it's really touching and it reminds me that I'm in a safe place to be.
Which is, I just want to say that's, you're an inspiration for them. And those are really lifelong skills that you'll be able to take with you. And wherever you go, you continue to ask people for help, there are people out there to support you. So, good for you. I look forward to seeing, seeing your success.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, so Perla, it's wonderful to see everything that you've accomplished already. As Dr. McCarthy said, you certainly are an inspiration. You're, you're humble. You got a real kind of humble swagger, you know, that bit of an oxymoron, but you got it. Embrace it, use it. I'm kind of curious on what you said you, you think you want to be. So you're looking at studying either film, like a film and media studies degree, which I know there's a great one, great program like that at the University of Kansas. I'm certain there's something else at that, at that other place, I don't know. But you also mentioned science. So are you, I'm curious, what kind of science are you most interested in? Any specific discipline, chemistry or, or even the applied sciences, engineering or anything like that?
Well, I've always been a weird kid, so I've always wanted to do everything. And in science, I've always seen shows where they see how the person died. I'm sorry if this is weird, but I don't know how like to explain it, but I want to go into forensic science, you know, become a detective, see how a person has, you know, passed away and being able to tell like the family like, oh, this is what happened. And, you know, because some family don't get to know what happened to their beloved. And for me to be, to tell them who and why is pretty amazing to me with just science.
Very good. I understand. Well, I know that you, you're probably going to have a ton of people who are helping you between now and when applications and everything are due. You're incredibly interested. I look forward to seeing what you do in the future. And if there's any way that any of us, if you're going to, you know, don't hesitate to call us. A bunch of people have our numbers.
Ms. Kirk.
And also your anxiety about where the money is going to come from. And somebody who is as talented as you are, they're going to be knocking at your door trying to help you. There is just, there is money out there for you. So you get with your people, your counselors and your folks at Highland Park, they can direct you because there will be money out there for somebody with your skills, your intelligence and your personality, which is out there. I think it's wonderful. You've got a lot going for you, so please don't be afraid and don't hesitate to. You can scrounge around for money. I mean, if you're really into the sciences, that's a big one. We're looking for women in the sciences. So don't, don't give up if it looks bleak to start with. It's hard, but there will be money out there for somebody like you. So, okay?
Yeah.
All righty.
Dr. Mickelson.
Congratulations on this great award. Just as a sidebar, my best friend is the Biology Department Chair at Washburn. So if we want to make a connection, Dr. Perry knows my number and we could arrange. I'm sure Dr. Mulliken would be happy to visit with you and then share with you those opportunities that are available at Washburn. Potential scholarship opportunities that are available there too. And Dr. Perry can be called. We'll set something up.
Well, I just want to congratulate you too, Perla, and you are an inspiration. I appreciate your honesty and transparency. And that just gives people insight into how they can step in and maybe be an assistance. And I'm appreciating what you shared with us about the supports that you were finding, first of all, in your family because they're the ones that have been there all the way through, but then even in the academic environment. And that, that helps us as school board members because that's what we're trying to build for all of our students, those kinds of supports. I'm excited for you to see where you go from here, but it will come, it will unfold in the next few months. You'll start seeing a direction for your trajectory. So hang in there, be encouraged and thank you for coming on this evening. Congratulations.
Thank you for having me.
Anything else? Okay, congratulations, Perla.
So here's a certificate and we congratulate the uniform Senior of the Month. And then there's a gift from your principal. Do you want to open the gift? We have already made a trip to Washburn. So you see what's inside the bag. And then mom and dad, after we do the next award, then we'll take a photo with the family with the board, okay? So just sit tight for a few minutes after we finish this portion of your certificate.
That's, that's a solid gift card. We didn't get that at Washburn.
The school that I plan to go to. T-shirt.
As we continue with acknowledgements, we know under the consent agenda, proclamations are listed. And as Mrs. Dr. Perry has already shared, that this month we are celebrating Hispanic heritage. And so with that celebration, starting off with our Senior of the Month, we now are rolling down to the elementary school. We'd like for the administrator from Whitson, Ms. Pierce, to come on up. Ms. X, are you going to join her? So, and then come on up, Ms. X. This is her first year as assistant principal. We want to get people real comfortable with coming in front of the board. And I'm going to turn it over to them to talk about who's with them this evening and then we'll turn it over to begin with our proclamation.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Anderson, I'll begin with the proclamation. Is that okay? Proclamation of Topeka Unified School District 501 Hispanic Heritage Awareness Month, September 15th through October 15th, 2018. And this is to commemorate the contributions made by Hispanics throughout our nation's history. And the month is not only to reflect upon the past, but also the future role of Hispanics in the United States. So we are honored to be able to be here tonight and share a little bit about our dual language program, but also in front of you are pieces of art that our students have done in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month. And then a little piece, a narrative written up about each piece so you can see where they came up with their idea and inspiration and what that's all about. Before we move on to introducing who came this evening, I do want to give a shout out to my Ms. Perla Soto, who was in my kindergarten class and started her journey at Whitson Elementary. And I love you and I am so very proud of you. So I need to get a hug before later, but you are so beautiful and grown up. I did not even remember my cute little pigtails, little Perla. It's really hard from that age till now, so congratulations. I'm so, so proud of you. But with that being said, I am also very proud to introduce my staff that is here as well as one of our dual language students in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month that also participates in our dual language program. So I'll first start with students first. So Ms. Hannah Klinger, will you please come forward? And she's going to share with you something in just a minute. But also here this evening, and I'll let her introduce her family, but also here this evening is Mr. Austin Allen, who is one of our fifth grade dual language teachers. Ms. Mar Barrio, who is our fourth grade dual language teacher. Ms. Tiffany Gross, who is our ELL teacher. And Ms. Lisa Mena, who is our ELL paraprofessional. So we have a very strong team here tonight to support Ms. Hannah. But we are so proud to be able to share with you tonight a little bit about our dual language program and then the art that's also in front of you. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Hannah.
Here, we'll give you the microphone this way. Ms. Kirk, are the video actually taping, just to see how, like, you want to hold the microphone close? Are you comfortable coming out behind the podium? And if not, you can just figure it out.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson and board members. My name is Hannah Klinger. I am in the fourth grade dual language program at Whitson Elementary. Our program is unique to our school. At Whitson, we have one teacher who teaches dual language for each grade level. This teacher needs to teach in English and Spanish all day. We learn language arts and writing both in both English and Spanish in second through fifth. Kindergarten, first grade students learn language arts and writing in their native language. We learn math in English and we learn social studies in Spanish. I love dual language because we do art and history based on Mexican and Spanish cultural events. Dual language is amazing.
Who is with you this evening? Parents or siblings?
My dad and my brother.
My dad and brother?
Joshua's dead, damn it.
Thank you so much for your support.
Last week we painted pictures. They were made to look like a monkey paintings. These paintings are made in Central Mexico. They're made of tree bark. I made my picture to look like a village of people. The blue dots are made to look like birds. There are two people talking from their windows of their houses. The other three people outside are talking to each other about the weather and if they think they should go to the park. The reason I painted this is because I only had one size of paper and a village would fit it best. I named it Village Life.
Board members, would you like to ask questions?
Anybody want to ask Hannah a question? Ms. Kirk.
Well, I don't have a question for you, Hannah, but would you tell all of your schoolmates thank you for these wonderful paintings and the explanations? They're, they're wonderful. We've been sharing them up here among us here. So would you make sure that you tell them that we say thank you? They're wonderful, very creative.
Do we get to keep them?
Permission for the students, I ask.
Yes, yes, we do have their permission.
No pressure, anything. No is okay.
Wait just a minute. I may have a certificate for you as well, Ms. Klinger. And so Ms. Klinger, this certificate, and you're going to take a picture with the board, recognizes you for engaging the Board of Education in conversation about your dual language experience. Congratulations, Ms. Klinger.
Hannah, before you go, Hannah, what do you want to do when you grow up? You've got plenty of time.
As we conclude, we also want to acknowledge Hannah's teacher. You're in the audience, right? All right. Thank you so much for being here and for the artwork. We so appreciate it as well, as well as all of our Whitson staff. At this time, we're going to take, we're going to take a five-minute break for photos. All right, so we'll be, that concludes our highlights. So we'll be taking a five-minute break and we'd like for our elementary students, since it's so late in the evening, to come back on up with family. And board members will be meeting you in the middle. We'll take a quick photo and then we'll be taking one with our Senior of the Month. And Whitson staff. Look to our elementary students first. We'll take a second one for the video. All right, so teacher, just come right on over here. Come on over, right on over here. Perfect. And then we're just going to position you like you're a chess teacher. All right. All right, Senior of the Month and family, come on in. Oh, and Mr. Klinger, here you go. And Senior of the Month family, you get your very own, I love cheap gifts, but people have to buy them because of this lady. I know, this is where the bagels are.
You are a wonderful little brother.
You did great, Hannah.
Oh, we're going to be late, Dad. Late for the last.
I know. Sometimes things go differently.
Staring there for just a minute. Ms. Pierce, can you come in the picture?
Okay, can you see on this card? I can't. There you go. And you got, if necessary, turn.
Ready? Let's go back here. Whitson family, can you make a path to the classroom?
Yes, thank you, thank you.
A path to the classroom.
Next on the agenda is public comments. It's too bad. So we're ready for disposition of business by consent.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent with the exception of numbers 10.1 and 18.5 to be pulled out and dealt with separately. And then I want that we authorize the board president or the superintendent superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We're ready to vote. Oh, yes. Mr. Whitson.
I should just say, those two items that were pulled just were at my request. One is the personnel report. Again, as we say every single time, there is absolutely zero conflict of interest if you have a spouse or a child and you're voting on something that's for the entire party unit. However, just a point I think is made out of my, I would like to distinguish myself from that vote. And the other item that has to be pulled is a combination from Westar Energy to the Topeka West Van Department of an electric vehicle, a big truck to take all of their van things around. I'm on the committee that made that decision. I did not vote on it. I abstained there and I'll abstain here, so I'm not on either side of that decision.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. So I think we're ready to vote? So we need a separate motion for both 10.1 and 18.5, whatever that was. Five. Second? Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ready to vote?
I think it's important for us to acknowledge that we have now completed all of our personnel salary increases. And I always forget all the numbers, so I'm going to ask Mr. Robbins if he would refresh everybody about what we've been able to do for all of our staff persons in the district this year.
Mrs. Kirk, beginning with our certified staff members, we were able to adjust salaries to the tune of 7.8%. The average increase that was given was $3,900 per employee. I would emphasize that that's not an average. So there was a range there. That was from about $3,000 up to $9,000. The classified personnel, we were able to give increases for salary classified of $3,900 a year. And for hourly classified was $1.88 per hour. If you look at the percent increase, that was about 11.87%. For what the board was able to do for classified staff, it was the largest increase that we have on record, going back to when we started tracking increases that has been given to classified staff over the years. And we were able to grant $3,900 increases to administrative staff that were on the payroll as of, or prior to, I should say, July 1 of this year. We were also able to adjust our subpay for certified teaching staff. We were paying $100 a day for certified teachers to fill in, $50 for a half a day. We were able to adjust that to $130 a day for a certified teacher and $65 for a half a day. We were also able to adjust the other category of subs that we have, whether it's a clerical staff, whatever the case may be, but we made adjustments to those salaries also. We were able to also put in a new schedule for classified staff as far as beginning hourly rates for each and every one of our classified categories.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you, Mr. Robbins, because I know that this was a lot of hard work on your part and staff's part, on your staff's part to try to manage our funds in such a way as that we can continue to pay our staff fairly. And we've done a bang-up job and I'm just really impressed. I don't know how many people realize that we pay the highest beginning salaries in the county. We have the best health insurance plan that Mr. Robbins has managed to get. Is it nine years now?
Eight.
Eight, I'm sorry. Eight years' worth of no increases in health insurance premiums. It's unheard of. But we can throw another one, we can do another one here? I think the people, we can do another one here? Anyway, I lose track, but I just think that...
They'll make it nine here, surely.
Yeah. But I just think it's important for the community to know that we've always tried to be very careful, but we've realized that, and I think our senior of the month here pointed out in her talk to us, that it was the teaching staff and their relationships with her that made a huge difference. And we want to keep people, staff here, who really love being with our kids. And the one way you do it is that you reward them more than adequately. They deserve more than adequate pay. And so I'm just pleased that we keep, however, keep our billings up. We've had new billings, we've got old billings that we keep up that look great every day. And we have kids that are being taught from people who really care about them. So, thank you.
And in case people read the newspaper about politics and these salary increases are going to the classroom. And that's very important to us, as it is to politicians.
I can't believe, you know, so they're going to the classrooms, they're going to the people who actually work in the classrooms.
Exactly.
Even the money we spend that don't go directly to people's salaries, this, since I've been on this board and we just did a $143 million bond initiative, we actually built classrooms. I mean, it's not like we... I'm glad you brought that up. I'm sorry, I won't make this into a night right about, you know, politics. But I just think it's so important, and you raised such a good point, that everything we do is about the classroom, it's important to the classroom. Every single...
I knew that you would make a comment about that. I did that on purpose. Okay.
There's going to be an open house for T-CAP, which is our newest effort, the completion of our newest effort. And if you haven't been out there, you need to go. I mean, I knew what was coming. I mean, it was supposed to be really good. And they had to take me around it, I apologize, in a wheelchair because it's so big, I can't walk the whole thing. It was amazing, amazing what we have built out there for our kids. And the opportunities that are out there. And I found it mind-boggling. It was way beyond what I thought we would be able to do and that we provide for kids. So I'm so proud of it. I just want everybody to go out and take a look. Because the opportunities for kids are amazing. And it's really about all the kids. It's what it's about. Thank you.
Very good. We are now ready for superintendent's report.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Robbins.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. With us tonight, we have representatives from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. It is pretty common for, on some frequency, that Blue Cross and Blue Shield provides an update concerning our insurance plan to the board. And tonight is that night, so I'll ask Ms. Donna Pashman, who is the regional manager for Blue Cross and Blue Shield, to come up. And she has a couple guests with her that I'm sure that she will get around introducing to the board. Nice to have you here this evening, Donna.
Thank you, Dr. Robbins. Thank you, Dr. Anderson and the board. I was going to, everyone is in such a good mood. I was going to go around and say, "Look me in the eye. Do you guys not like me? You make me deal with that man year after year. Eight years. Actually, they've been doing this since 2008. And zero is all he ever says. I've been warning him all year that there's a 19% increase coming, right? Ms. McCarthy, Ms. Donna Morrison, you're in those meetings at the insurance committee. And what am I hearing? Zero. Oh, no, then it gets better. Then he says, "No, I want zero for two years." I threw my hands up and I said, "There is absolutely no way that that is going to happen." I had to go back to my boss, Mike Iverson, our director of sales, and pitch this. So I'm going to, at this point, turn it over to him and let him kind of talk about the, what this has done into, for Blue Cross of Kansas and what we put together for Topeka Public Schools. Because it's not a laughing matter. I think I'm very, very proud of it. And I hope I don't cry tonight because I am that proud of it. So, but here, I'm going to turn you over to mine.
Thank you very much, Donna. So Donna walks into my office. And she said, "Well, you're not going to believe this." And she's right, I didn't believe it. Yet, I have such respect for Donna and her relationship with Larry and USD 501, the Topeka Public School. Been a partner with us for, I believe, 76 years. We value that. That's very, very important to us. But in a day and age when you see trend increases in our industry that most years are double-digit, not single-digit, it's a compounding effect. And we're all challenged by this, whether it's new technologies, whether it's the lack of health in our communities and in workplaces. It's a real challenge. So to accomplish what this is, what you've accomplished is nothing short of miraculous. But I think it is important for all of us to understand that it's not completely earned at this point. What we do recognize as a company, we're challenged with the same thing ourselves. The employee health plan of Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas has not been able to accomplish a 0% increase in any of the last nine years. Not one. We can't do it ourselves. But I want to thank Mr. Robbins publicly and recognize Donna's efforts because I think something special took place. And what has taken place with us is we've been challenged. We've been challenged in this relationship, not just to help deliver a good financial news for you, but we've also been challenged ourselves. We're seeing something historic take place here, and that is a pilot program. You're the first. You are the pilot in what we're embarking on, which is an outcomes-based wellness collaborative effort. We're doing the same thing now at Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas with the employee plan. We now have an outcomes-based wellness program that is set to create a leadership in the communities in which we serve. Now, our goal is to complete the health of our employee population for our own personal benefit, our own personal gain, but also for the finances of our company. All three of us standing before you, you here tonight, failed at least one marker in our biometric screening as we embarked on the wellness program. I personally failed my BMI. And, you know, I learned that a BMI above 30 is technically considered obese. And here, Dr. Morrison, I always thought it was just athletic. Not obese, but no, athletic.
Yes, we both have that.
So, true story. A little over a week ago, I was in a meeting with some of our medical professionals and I turned to them and asked, "So how do you calculate BMI? How do you do this?" Well, there's an mathematical formula for it, but Dr. Haber can't help me out and said, "Mike, you don't have to worry about the math." He said, "Here's an app." So he helped me download an app on my phone and I punched in the numbers. I had just weighed myself that morning. And I was so excited because when I punched in the number, my BMI was 29.97. What that means is I went from obese to just overweight. How exciting is that? And I have to confess, because that was a Friday, and so I celebrated a little bit that evening. The next day, I was obese. You know, it happens. But all seriousness aside, you know, we really believe sincerely in the benefits of creating a wellness at work or in the workplace program. And I think we're so proud of the fact that you've adopted that policy. And that's why, as a company, we've made that investment in the Topeka Public Schools. We truly believe that it's going to be a long-range benefit. We are now creating a more formalized program. Donna and Larry somehow put this together, you know, pretty much built it as they went. And we adopted it as a company, but now we're going to take that forward to other clients. So we want to thank you for that. You really challenged us to do something over and above and very special. And so we hope to be able to continue to deliver those no increases. But it's going to be because of the collaborative effort between us. And I know Donna and Jeremy are going to share more specific information, but on behalf of Blue Cross of Blue Shield of Kansas, I just want to thank all of you. We appreciate the relationship and are here to make a difference. So thank you.
Okay, that's all right. Well, I'll go through, I'll go through. I actually did a PowerPoint. I'm very impressed with myself. There's only a few errors in it. I'm not even going to get to see it. But, okay, so I am going to, and I don't know, Jeremy, did you write on this page of yours? Because I have to show this. Okay, could you write that out because I want to pass that around every time, yes? Okay, so my agenda tonight is basically to talk about the 2018 renewal. Yeah, the trends, and what we need to do to educate employees, the wellness program, the disease management programs, the biometrics that are in this pilot program, and then to be here for questions. But, you know, faced with a 19% increase, and probably, I joked about it, you know... Where did he go? Oh, he's trying to get me. See, walk away. I think I did walk away from there. And I did not want to go into his office and say, "What am I going to do?" But, you know, the two-year commitment on the no rate increase, and even the fact that we're going to be building this for others, it still takes that collaborative effort and it has to come from the top down, which you guys have agreed to. I don't know of a lot of other companies that we might go show this to or that are going to take that. Because it doesn't work if it doesn't start from here and you guys agree to do it. And then we have to do the education together. This is a committed partnership, as Mike said. We have a 76-year history together and I am extremely proud of that. And I don't, on my watch, want that to ever change. With this program, we together are leading the way to the better health care while focusing on what matters the most. And what matters the most to me is to Blue Crosses, our members, to you and your employees. So I think that's what this pilot program is going to do for you. The trends, which Jeremy is, did you hand it? Okay. So I don't need him, but this is the piece that I wish Alar was in here because we've been working together since he came on. You guys hired him August 2008. And since 2011, the 0% increases have been going on. But this chart shows you what the average increase is in our book of business for large groups from 2011 to 17. from 2011 to 17. I don't have eighteen information yet, of course. But if I put that nineteen percent that you guys earned in there, it's four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Had we been going increase after increase, not making any changes, not making any headway, not being able to give the zero percent increases when financially, it was a strain on Blue Cross to do so. But that total cost avoidance was eleven point nine million. You still have a single rate of five thirteen fifty-six. And when I say a collaborative effort, the only way that this program is gonna work is it has to be. It has to be on both of our parts. Not just Blue Cross, not just the board, not just the superintendents. It's all the employees. And we have to be flexible and willing to make it work because this is a pilot. I met with Misty Gensinger yesterday, your new corporate nurse, and just told her, I said, this is a work in progress. And then we need to collaborate together and make sure that we are moving forward in the right direction. It was a huge process, even for executive leadership, to agree to this proposal. And even coming up with, what is it that we can do? When it came down to, it needs to be something that we can measure and something that will assist those members, your employees, with their health for themselves. Not just if they don't have a primary care physician, but we know that a lot of them are not going and getting their biometrics done. So they don't know if they have an issue or not. You know, our own Blue Cross, when we did the biometrics the first time, the nurses said they found seven employees who were prediabetic. And that was because we did the blood draw. But they also, if the blood sugar was over a hundred, and I'm talking way out of my comfort zone, they did the A1C, and that's where they found those employees. That is a huge deal. Targeted dedication. So we need to make sure that it's vital that your school districts also join together. And here in this, the Burnett Center, we have to... You know, the goals are pretty much outlined. We've, I've seen the communication to your employees. But the culture needs to change here. As the culture has changed at Blue Cross of Lucio of Kansas, as you see all the employees walking around the building, people doing things, taking time out, you know, Mike and I were... I can't remember your name. But had mentioned that your husband and his company, for thirty minutes a day, they could have a thirty-minute break if they walked. Otherwise, they had their fifteen-minute break. But we have employees that struggle to get their walk-in around their breaks, or they're eating their lunch too fast, or, you know, eating their lunch at their desk because they wanted to go exercise. So changing that culture is only gonna help your employees to try to achieve and accomplish. And also, change isn't easy, so you're gonna have some resistance. But I think as employees embrace each other, they see things happening in their schools, that they're gonna get more participation as people talk. Who doesn't want a second year no rate increase by needing these measures? And it's gonna make your chef healthier. You know, it was obvious right off the bat when LR and I were talking that your current wellness program needed to make some changes. You know, and based on the claims history. You know, it was no longer yielding the outcomes that it once did. It hadn't changed. We hadn't made any changes. While it did make a difference in some members, I'm not saying that it didn't, it's just we needed to, we need to continually look at it. And so that's what we've done. We've looked at a new wellness program. And it's focused more on things that could have a positive impact on the wellness of your employees. And a couple of those things Jeremy's gonna come up and talk about that we are offering to your employees at no cost to them. So it's totally free to them, which is gonna be our disease management programs that we've talked about for years, and as well as the biometrics and why we chose the biometrics.
Picking back on what Donna was sharing here and Mike, I got a little story to share at the end as well. So I'm talking fast, I'm excited, so I wanna get to that. But disease management programs, what does this mean to your members? These are programs that our nurses provide one-on-one telephonic visits to those that maybe aren't meeting their markers. For example, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, other stresses, we have weight management, diabetes, things like that. We have a slide, sorry, yeah. Has some stats, some information as to the success of these programs. Members that participated, ninety-four, ninety-five percent satisfied. The information that these nurses share, a good portion there, ninety, almost ninety-five percent have been able to add that information to their life. Ninety-two percent increased their exercise habits within the past. Six months?
Can we make that? We can't really read it here either, it's so faint.
No, you talk into this, right here.
This is my error page.
A little bit more?
It's easier to read, yeah.
You're good, okay. So, these are available. And we see that there are certainly successes. I have a success story with it as well. Members who have these cell phone calls, it's improved their physical and mental health. So this is another avenue that, you know, your employees will have. They may be already hearing these things from their primary care physician or other family members. This will kinda reinforce that. We ask, okay, well, biometric screenings, why do we do those? But that gives them... We can actually skip to the next slide, it's a little larger. There we go. And what I would probably wanna point out is that it powers them. It gives them the data they need to see, you know, how their health is, how they can improve it, okay? Second, you know, research shows it can increase his or her chances of a positive outcome when there's a chronic condition found. Don't know what you don't know. So that's very helpful. Okay, let's get to my story. And then third, biometric screenings, they encourage those who do not have a primary care physician to obtain one. And that's part of the wellness plan that we have in place for 501. So it just makes sense. Let's get more individuals to see their primary care physician to, you know, help improve that quality of life. I've been carrying this around all day, since yesterday. I got my results. So you know, Mike was sharing, we have results-based, outcome-based plan as well. So we had our health review successful recently for some of those. I see some familiar faces from the Wellness Committee. So you know my story over the last four years, trying to do what I can, you know, get an encouragement and pushing from Blue Cross here. When I got these results, I get a little emotional sometimes thinking about it. You know, having the data is great. But, you know, for a few years, I didn't go to a primary care physician. So, okay, I see the data, what can I do? I can change my diet, I can work out or run more. You know, I know some of these things. I didn't really have a plan, didn't have somebody in my corner, so to speak. Well, with having this available now, having the encouragement from our team, I've made it a point to see my primary care physician twice this year. I think I had, if I recall, three things that I missed. And I have not missed, missed any of them on this update here. So I'm a little overweight, but no longer obese. I'm highly normal, so I know I have a lot of work to do yet. But it's good to see that data and have... I've taken advantage of primary care physician, having those discussions, finding out that, you know, some of it is hereditary. So I have a prescription that's gonna help. Other things, diet, you know, right? Probably shouldn't eat wheat. I like a good wheat beer from time to time, so... You know, it's from time to time. So, but you know, it's, I'm excited to be coming in, joining your team here in the last year and a half. And with the changes that Blue Cross and the initiatives that we have interacted with, we've worked with Mr. Robbins and Donna. I'm excited to be a part of that and work with your school district on improving that quality and keeping you guys informed. So I have... Any questions? People from Blue Cross?
Another question, but I certainly wanted to say. I didn't realize you were all Blue Cross, Lucio folks, when I made my comments about our health insurance to... That was just my ignorance. But you looked familiar, see? But I couldn't put, I just couldn't figure out who or what, who you were. And then as soon as he said something about it, I looked over and I said, oh my gosh, those are the people. But anyway, thank you for your partnership, is really what I wanted to say. I think it's made a huge difference for us. And the changes that you're suggesting and how we help people who seem not to be able to get to the... to do these things that we know are important, you know, to work on that, I just, it's been great. I think that we've been worrying about our employees who haven't gotten this taken care of. And thank you for your help and your partnership in working on this and allowing us to do this, and Larry for your brilliance. And I appreciate it. And you're a belladonna. Listen, I would not, I would not wanna sit across the table from Eric Robbins. No, no, we just know that he's very good at advocating for us and making sure that we get the best possible options for our staff. Because health insurance is, we all know, the cost is awful. And I'm retired. And when I think about what I am paying for my Medicare and for my supplement and for my Part D, I'm paying a huge chunk of money that I don't know how other people pay for. I'm just lucky. But it is a very huge problem for all of us. I appreciate the partnership, your willingness to work with us. And it's been, you know, it's been so great for our employees. I just thought we gotta keep this number out there with them so they understand how much money that we have saved this district and them because they would be sharing this huge amount of money that we would be paying to you had we not got into this program. So, thank you. I'll try to remember next year.
And I beg all your employees to hit their markers because I don't want to sit next to you at Blue Cross again next year and try to negotiate. Because it won't be a negotiation. I have faith, I think we built this program so that it's gonna be successful. And I think we'll just keep building on it. And Mike, appreciate you guys allowing us the opportunity to implement it here as well.
Dr. McCarthy?
Donna, it's been a real pleasure working with you over the years. And when you got your permission, you were not allowed to stop coming to see us. That was understood. During the period of time I have been on the board and that you have been able to sustain these zero percent increases was one of the most challenging times in education. All of us were having to work together to try to help our teachers survive this period of low funding and doing everything we could. So you should not only be proud of what you've done to improve employees' health, but also the far-reaching effects on all of our children in being able to limit costs for our employees so that we can continue to compensate our teachers and recruit the best people possible. Being able to offer such a rich health insurance package made us stand apart. And there are people who chose to come to our district because we had better health insurance benefits. So we really thank you for that. And I'm sure our teacher union president could speak on behalf of teachers and maybe share some of that in the perspective of how thankful, the effect it's had on you to have a zero percent health insurance increase all these years.
So it very much does set us apart from other associations, from other districts. We do share that we not only have a zero percent increase each year. We say, you know, well, you need to have your HR person talk to ours because, you know, he's got the formula mastered. But also, we talk about that the quality of the benefits that we provide are better than others. That we have a better prescription drug coverage plan, and we have lower deductibles, et cetera, et cetera. And our employees who have spouses in other districts know that for a fact because they can compare apples to apples. But also, I think, you know, and we were talking about, this is a very stressful profession. And being there for those students then sometimes means that you aren't taking care of yourself. And so I think what this can help us do as we move out of, hopefully, pending November elections, but hopefully, move out of a time of a lot of assaults on the profession, a lot of challenges to the profession, of underfunding of our schools. Hopefully, we're moving into a time where we can really lift up the profession of education and really allow us an opportunity to show what we can do and what we can accomplish when we're properly funded. And I think if that were to happen, you know, as we achieve our staffing levels, et cetera, et cetera, perhaps then we can remove some of that stress from some of our educators. And we can come back to some balance. Let's get some work-life balance so that we can lead, not just as educators and support our students, but also lead in leading a healthy life, showing our students how to do that. And so I'm hoping that this gives us that opportunity. But again, I think it's good to see all of us working together and figuring out what that looks like. So, yes, thank you for that opportunity.
Any other comments or questions? I have a few. This is extraordinary, as you, I mean, I've, of course, been in the medic profession for, you know, thirty-plus years. And we were always struggling with this at our corporation for our employees. And that's number one. And number two, the way you've approached this is to incentivize health, wellness. I mean, and that's exactly what should be happening. Speaking from a medical point of view, if you just paid every time somebody... If you were reactive instead of proactive, sure, insurance rates are gonna go sky-high. But if you're proactive and you get your employees healthy, insurance rates ought to go down. And so this program is, I mean, I'm very, very curious as to see how it works and to see how employees take it. I know there will be some employees that will still get their wheat and their barley. Mr. Ecton. But exercise is very important. And, you know, you wanna incentivize good nutrition and exercise and healthy weight, not smoking. And I think all this does this. So I thank LR for his negotiations and his thinking about this. But really, we have to thank you guys, too. I mean, it's not a one-way street, it's a two-way street. So we really appreciate what you've done for our teachers and our classified employees as well. So, thank you. Anything else you wanna say, LR?
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Now, I would like to take this opportunity to say that over the years, it has been a pleasure working with Ms. Patchman. Yes, we have been able to accomplish what I think is a mutual goal as far as doing what is best for the employees of Tepica Public Schools. But, you know, we've been able to build a working relationship, been able to identify what I would consider to be mutual goals. the mutual goals, and been able to work collaboratively to meet those. So I want to thank Ms. Pashman, I want to thank Mike and the entire executive team at Blue Cross and Blue Shield, because this doesn't happen without the blessing of the executive committee, their Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So I think it shows that they have faith in you. Hopefully, it shows that they have faith in Topeka Public Schools. It certainly shows that they appreciate the longstanding relationship that we have established over the years. But it's been a pleasure working with you, Donna, and I look forward to a few more years of us continuing to build on that relationship.
Absolutely. I like that, I like to do it, but the only time I can, it's like this. It's a good day when Kelly says, do not upset him. Never try to.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. You always want the last. You always want the last word.
You know, I can't thank Donna enough. The point I really wanted to make, and this is coming from both the heart as well as from the executive team, well-being is contagious. We are witnessing something on our campus that is pretty incredible. The three of us that all failed our markers for different reasons, we're doing something about it. That's happening everywhere on campus, we have 1,500 employees. We're seeing a more productive workforce, we're seeing energy levels coming up. My operations manager flies from the building now versus, you know, six months ago, he struggled to move through the building, he's more attentive. And so what I think is so important is we're starting something that financially needs far more of those health insurance premiums. You do it for different reasons, but the productivity of your staff, the quality of life that needs to be. Please continue to send that message out there, that we all benefit from this. And I think we're going to see this contagious thing spread out throughout our city, and that's so extremely important to all of us. And we, again, thank you very much.
Right. We have one action item. Did you have anything else? So, we just need a motion to change the meeting site of September 20th, board meeting from Burnett to T-Calc. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mrs. Kirk already discussed it for us. So I hope all of you will come to T-Calc for a word. Okay. All right.
All votes are in, motion carries.
Oh, see, 4 o'clock is ribbon cutting and tours.
Ribbon cutting tours, 6 o'clock, executive session at 3:00 right now.
Executive session at 6:00. Ribbon cutting at 4:00. Okay. So, ready for board comments?
I'm looking forward to the 20th of the ribbon cutting. And more importantly, I'm looking forward to being able to go back in and visit and spend some time in the cadre as an active participant.
In the what room?
Beer day to draft it.
Oh.
Oh, the drafting, the architects.
I need a visit back in time.
Good for you.
I think it's going to be the flagship history for years to come.
Very good. Dr. McCarthy. Ms. Johnson.
I think we can almost say a new model could be Topeka Public Schools Blues and Miracles after that, that report that we just got. And we do think, I do thank you, Mr. Robbins, and the collective brilliance, yeah, we're out. Collective brilliance that came to this end is really going to be for our benefit. And I know we won't miss it, but our responsibility on our end as part of the district to meet the criteria, we definitely take that seriously. Along with that, I do want to congratulate Dr. Anderson again, that's a woman of influence, and I appreciate the young students that you brought there and just the questions that have been asked since then regarding the college craft part of our district, the opportunity that we have and how it's going to be expanded. So it is out there, they're asking about it, and it's firing. So we appreciate you giving us business cards in the district. Lastly, I look forward to going to T-Calc as well, but I think I might call my attention on, because that is might be advisable, but it is beautiful, well-done, and I think it just encourages us, reminding us again about bond issue and what our constituents said they wanted us to do, and the outcome is beautifully done. We look forward to the opportunities for us.
Dr. McCarthy.
I took some time to go tour Williams Magnet School. I've decided I'm going to try to make an effort to get into the buildings more, and so that was the natural place for me to start, because it's where all three of my children went. And I would encourage everybody to stop by there. I was extremely impressed with all kinds of things I saw. The building was fresh and clean, newly painted, beautiful new furniture in the pods that really looked very adaptable for teachers to use, for flexible grouping and the seats. Every classroom I peeked into, students were engaged. We have amazing teachers who just even this soon into the semester were already on target with the work they were doing. I was especially excited about the science labs. I know that, you know, during the time I've been on the board, and especially through the No Child Left Behind years, so much focus had to be placed on English and language arts and math that it felt over the years that some of the magnet theme at Williams became diluted. And I understood why that happened, but it still offers that opportunity. And now I feel like we're in a position, from a political and kind of educational philosophy standpoint, to be able to reinvigorate that magnet theme. And there are some absolutely outstanding teachers manning those classrooms right now. They've kind of got some new people in those positions, the art teacher as well is just doing amazing work. So, very exciting to see, and I look forward to seeing what we can do as a board to reinvigorating that magnet and maybe offering something, something special in the science classrooms there.
Mr. Witz.
Well, I just would kind of echo what I said earlier and how excited I am about the fact that, so, you know, as Ms. Kirk mentioned earlier, we just finished all of our, all of our personnel compensation upgrades. I'm very excited about the fact that when you look at all the money that we have and all the new money that we got, and even all the bond money, there is, would be incredibly difficult for anybody to argue that we were not spending our money, you know, in the classroom. We are either spending it and boosting the people who teach our children for seven hours, you know, whatever, boosting their salaries, or giving them additional resources, or making sure we're paying for the people doing and working with students that have mandated services, you know, individual education plan. And in other cases, we're actually building a classroom, a big classroom. So I just wanted to toss that out there. I'm excited about that because right now KASB is collecting data from school districts on how they spent the majority of the new money that they got from the last year's school finance bill. And overwhelmingly, you know, 98% of the people are saying that, you know, they're spending it in the exact same places you can, pretty much you can trust boards of education when it comes to trying to improve student learning conditions, knowing where to put the money to do that. It's typically teachers' working conditions and other things that support the classroom. So, now what I will say, what also makes me feel good, and I know this is certainly me, a couple of board members felt that in the administration, not everybody was in as good a position as us to do it as well as us. Having the, you know, second highest bond rating in the state and having such an incredibly strong financial situation allowed us to do all kinds of things that other people couldn't. We end up with this great increase for teachers, this great increase for all of our classified employees. We're in a stronger negotiating position when it comes to working cooperatively with our insurer. Thank you guys for all the great things you do, and it's a pretty exciting time to be on the board after, you know, I guess now like nine years of recession. So in the end of my 12-year board career.
Ms. Kirk.
Well, just to remind my colleagues that I did some checking for flights to New Orleans, and you can't just get there from here. I didn't see that even on Southwest, I didn't get a direct flight, so, so I don't, well, anyway. Everybody flies there, these that you got to go around the country before you can find your way there. Just to remind you that if you're going to go to get those taken care of. And I, and after going through T-Calc and thinking about what, all the things that are going to be ready for us to show and showcase when that happens a year from this October, I am just so excited for us. There's just so much going on. We'll have, we'll have a whole full year of the College Prep Academy that you're working on, that'll be going, I mean, all those things. I mean, the opportunities out there, I just am thrilled with us. And so I want to share that with other people, because, you know, we did it before, we were struggling. And so now we have so much to share. I'm just looking forward to that happening here, so. Just don't forget to get your tickets, because I just, as I said, I was looking at it, it's not as easy as I thought it would be. I thought I could put it off too, but it's like I'm not going to be able to, so.
So, do we have the dates for then?
Yeah, it's October, is it the 13th, Saturday the 13th? Okay, you'll have to go in Saturday sometime to get in there. They'll have something, they have something going on there, and they sent a little thing out, I don't know if you all saw it out. They're going to have a swamp tour for all of us, which will be fun. They do a swamp tour, they're not taking us to Washington DC either. This is, this is a real swamp, so that'll be part of what they'll be offering to all of us. If you've never been on one of those. But anyway, they'll be, also, they're doing good things. They just gave us a brief idea of what's going to happen, but they will have something Saturday night for those of us. Most everybody has to, has to get in Saturday night anyway, just now the flights would be early enough in the morning on Sunday to get in. So I start Sunday morning then, and then it finishes up on Tuesday. John's got it under, he knows better than I, he's very good at keeping track of those things.
Okay. I did tour Williams as well, I was very impressed. Ms. Harson took me over to Williams and over to Stout, and we looked at both of those. And then early morning was at Allenburg Central in Quincy. And I think I told you about the Quincy PE instructor who's bringing those kids on. I'm very curious to see his results. See, we had a very good meeting of the, oh, we should remind about the Health and Fitness Night. Yeah, it's 12. 5:30 to 7:30, so. And with that, I think we're ready to adjourn.
I just have a question, they have anything for us to do that night? They, specifically?
Go walk.
Walk, I get mugged.
Nancy, come by our table, we'll have something for you to do.
Thing I can do sitting down, thank you.
So, we have a motion for adjournment? And a second, any discussion? Ready to vote?
All votes are in, motion carries.